Good evening and welcome to the Town of Acton Selectments Meeting for March 22nd, 2016. First item on the agenda, a salute to the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Seconded.
All in favor? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor? All right. Department Head Committee Chair, updates. Forest Conservation Consol- consolidation?
Consolidation.
Consolidation. That spelled right?
Sir Chair, if I can give you just a little bit of history on this, remind the board. So back in January before the deadline, the Forest and Conservation came before you and was hopeful that they would be able to put a warrant article on the June Town Meeting, hoping to consolidate these two committees. So Mr. Cashin has, with his group, has been doing some research. Yesterday, he came to us with, came to Michelle and I, with some information regarding where these committees kind of came from, because before we can decide if we can consolidate them together, we need to determine if they're based on an ordinance or how they were voted in to start. So as you'll see by, thanks to Tom, some of the information that he pointed out, I think the biggest thing that you find in this packet that I gave you is that, in fact, in June in 2004, Article 71 established a committee for the Town Forest. Oh, I'm sorry, my mistake. Let me go back. Got a different one, I'm sorry. How about March of 1994? That's the one I meant to refer to. Article 47, to see if the town will vote to enact the following Conservation and Rec. Committee Ordinance. So back in 1994, the townspeople actually approved an ordinance that combined those two, the rec and the conservation.
Separated them.
Now, you think it separates them?
Yeah, it would have separated them, because they're separate.
To see if the town will vote to enact the following Conservation and Recreation Committee Ordinance. Have you read this entire ordinance?
No, but I remember it. You know, they didn't split it up.
Since 1994? Because that's, I mean, come on up and tell me what I missed. I mean, this says Conservation and Recreation Committee Ordinance. It establishes the committee. It establishes the appointments, the duties. So if this, you're saying, has been dissolved since 1994?
You know, the Recreation Ordinance, it quite was.
Right, but the question is, did they, was there a vote to dissolve the ordinance? Because as much as a committee can go astray and do their own thing, ordinances top everything.
Well, it was at the Town Meeting, so.
It was at the Town Meeting, okay. So Tom, I mean, that's the next thing that we need to find, because the conversation that Tom and I had today was that this was a concern, because we couldn't consolidate, you can't consolidate the conservation with somebody, you've already got an ordinance that trumps it. So now, if you're bringing new information, saying that at some point at a Town Meeting, the rec separated themselves from the conservation, we need to be able to find those minutes. And that brings us to a different place, wouldn't you agree?
Okay, so let's look for some more information and bring this back up again next Tuesday.
Okay, well, they've got a couple of questions that may need some legal advice, and we need your opinion as to whether or not you're going to okay that.
Well, we okayed the ordinance, so whatever we need to do to make it happen, I mean the...
So you don't want to know?
You know what the questions are, right?
I know what they are.
Okay, so we'll just pass them on to the attorney, and then when we have the answers, we can discuss it next week, okay? But we'll have to do it legally. We may have to vote the ordinance down first, and there's also the election, so we're going to have to put it all before the election for the Forestry, Forest Committee, because that's voted on the floor. So we'll have to have an attorney tell us exactly how to do it correctly, but I don't see any problem with doing it. Okay. You guys agree?
I kind of like know what the questions are.
All right. You want to tell us what the questions are?
Well, I was just trying to work through this a little bit today. It seems, hopefully, we can keep the questions to the lawyer, to very common sense and simple. If we pose some questions to him, I guess, would be the easiest way to do it, so he doesn't, we don't get too far afield with this. We will do the homework, hopefully, to put the Town Report pre-existing language into Jennifer's hands, so that he can have all the materials that are pertinent. And I've done, I think we're missing one statute, the 87. Bill and I will work that out. But it seemed on reflection today that if we voted to merge the Conservation and Forestry Committee, would be one component, probably the first one, then the Town Meeting would have to vote to dissolve the separate committees to enable the merger to go forward, so that would have to be second to the acceptance of the notion of the merger. And then, the most effective way maybe to clean up the housekeeping of existing members and their terms of office, et cetera, would be to have a resignation of all existing committee members pertinent, and then have a clean slate provided for the election of new members that are interested.
We'll have the attorney do that, and whenever we do an ordinance, the attorney writes the ordinance anyway, so we make sure it's legal. So we'll have him take all of this information, go over it, and then he'll write the ordinance and tell us the exact process that we have to do it, and then we'll have the warrant done that way, so we vote in the right order. And if we have to get resignations from everybody, then we'll do, you know, anybody that still has a term, then we'll do that, too. Is everybody that's on there willing to resign in order to, and then go on to this new committee?
We have not broached that subject, but everybody at the, we had a meeting, a joint meeting of the two committees last Tuesday night at seven. All that were present was basically the combined Conservation Group and the Forestry Group.
Do you have a quorum from both groups?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, but to answer your question, Ted, no. I spoke to another individual. There are other individuals that are on these committees that may not have been present, and, you know, I'm not going to get into names here, that may not agree and want to see their terms out. So, I mean, the first thing we have to do is make sure that we can prove that the rec dissolved itself. And then we need to ask the attorney if we can even do this. Because you may not be able to incorporate it until after some of these terms are done, or they may have to be given first, you know, at least be able to sit their terms out on this new joint committee. Unless it's a brand-new committee with a new name, and we're starting fresh. I mean, there's a difference between, you know, consolidating these two, or, you know...
Well, it wouldn't be a new entity.
But do you have a new name?
Conservation slash Town Forestry.
So you're joining too, so you can't call that a new name. Good try, Tom, good try.
Okay. You have anything from the Fire Department?
Just a few things. Did you, I did get my action plan, I'm sure you did, from Lance, in regards to the rescue building. Met with a contractor last night, was going to come in, take care of the sheet rock, the right-to-painting, getting things done. We did find a little bit of black mold here and there, there's a little bit more that needs to be taken care of there.
Is that from, is that being paid for out of the leftover money from?
The insurance check from the association.
Insurance check.
That's correct.
So that's not going to cost the town any money at all?
No, not to do all the water damage and all that stuff and everything there.
Okay, great.
Without opening the can of worms, it's kind of an argument that I have, is we took that building over in good faith, is the way I look at it. And now, this is, this is a burden that's being put onto the Fire Department, onto my budget. As Lance pointed out to us, the hand railing is supposed to be 42 inches high, and it's only 37 inches high. There's no balusters going up the stairs. I'd like to get Kenny over there and say, hey, let's do a walkthrough, let's do a punch list, and see what needs to be done. So like I said, that being a burden onto us, we took that building over, those things should have been up to code to begin with. So what I'd like to do is use that money, if we can, from that insurance, to get that building up to code. If not, that needs to come out of my, out of my maintenance budget money for the fire station.
Well, the thing is, is the insurance did a walkthrough, and he's only concerned about the railing. So that's, that's the only thing we have to do right now. So I would feel more comfortable of having Kenny go through and figure out everything that it's going to cost, and then we'll do it as a project, you know, next year, because it's not anything that's going to keep you from using the building, you've been using it for years anyways.
Yeah, but if for some reason we were to open that up or whatever, if somebody from the public were to use that, and something would have happened...
I thought we were going to just keep it as a fire building.
Well, that's what we're going to do.
You're not going to open it to the public.
But I'm just, that's what we just need to make sure on that, so.
Yeah, I mean, the insurance agent insures the building, and that's the only thing he's worried about, is that...
That's the three, Ted.
What's that?
If you look at your, there's three on the action plan.
But no, that's fine.
Three little ones, but, yeah, but...
You know, that's what I was saying, you know, I just wanted to bring it up, than it is to, you know, get a...
The quicker we can get these done and get main municipal, you know how it is, we can get that done, and then...
Yep, because we've got to be...
The fire alarm is shut off?
Well, the thing is, is the, there was never no fire alarm over there.
Oh.
So we will have to call him, or maybe you can, all right, however we want to do it, Jen, because there was just a security alarm. So if the door was open and somebody breached the building, the alarm would go off, the horn would go off. That was it. We never had no fire alarm in there, because there's no telephone in there. So I don't know if he just saw the box and thought the whole thing was rolled in like it is here.
Yeah.
So we just need to clarify that, so.
I will happily work on that one, if you can get the first two done.
Yep, yep, so.
Emergency light, that's just a quick fix, right?
Yep, yep, we should be, we'll look at that, repair that there, and...
Do you think you can get these top two done within the next week?
Yeah, actually, well, within the next couple of weeks, we will definitely meet our deadline, but, you know, within the next two or three weeks, that place will be what needs to be done, done.
Just these, right, Ted?
Yep. Talked with the contractor last night, he is going to come and see you, and just get the paperwork for, the contract paperwork for the town, he is licensed.
Well, if he's doing it for the ambulance, he's got to go see Bill Catanze. Bill's going to be paying him.
Yep.
We're not paying him, so we don't need that information, whatever Bill wants, but...
I just want, you know, I just want to process these and daughter eyes, because it is...
And that's why I want to make sure what Ted's saying is clear, so...
Yeah, make sure we get the insurance, because it is our building.
Yes, that's right, that's what I'm saying.
We're only covering these, though, right, Ted?
Huh?
The only thing that this board, Ed, wants to cover is the railing and the emergency light, which I'm guessing the emergency light you guys can do.
Yeah, I don't think they can make us put in a fire alarm, and that's something we can do down the road, but I mean...
But like I said, he saw the box, and it's the same box we have in the hallway here, so he probably thought it didn't, it was multiple task box, and it isn't. All it is is just a, just a in-house alarm system that if somebody would ever go in there, it would sound, so. But nope, so we're moving, moving right along on that there. We'll get that all taken care of, in regards to that there. So, we'll keep them exactly there. Just to, just to clarify, we had, at last week's Selectman's Meeting, it was brought to my attention that any clerical work that were to be done for the Fire Department here at the Town Hall would have to be a budget, was going to come out of my budget. Selectman Kreizak, you made, you mentioned that last week, I talked to...
We changed, no, that's what we were doing, but we've changed that. We've changed the pay for Michelle and Jennifer. So what we have been doing through this process is been taking it out of the fire budget, because they've been doing the work to do all the paperwork for getting the ambulance licenses and all those things. So we took their hourly rate while they were working on that out of the fire budget, because they were working for the Fire Department to combine the ambulance and the Fire Department. But they won't be, next year, they will not be taking any money for Jennifer and Michelle out of your fire budget.
Okay. Just, so we'll clarify if I could...
That's what I told you, right?
Yeah, as long as I can get a letter from, from you, and it be signed, I just don't want to...
No, we don't need to do a...
Well, okay, as long as everybody understands that. I just don't want this to come back and get me six months later.
No, it was Fire, it was Fire Department business only, you had nobody in the Fire Department that could do it, and we had to do it in order to do the consolidation. So the time that they worked on doing the negotiations, and working with the state to get the license, and working with the federal government to get the, you know, to get the payments from the Medicaid and all that kind of stuff, that, that was hours that were not town hours.
Okay.
So that came out of your budget.
Okay.
And it's not a lot of money.
Yeah.
But it's not going to be coming out anymore.
Okay.
Because they are now going to have that job, Michelle's going to be doing all the salaries, and Jennifer's going to be doing the personnel files and all that, we've changed their job situation, and that's coming out, that's part of the next Town Budget, not the Fire Department.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on this, so if we had to do something...
When they brought in Jennifer Ascato to do some of that, the project didn't end...
That's correct.
So that's, any check requests you saw coming out of that was for those specific things. But the Selectmen did the same thing with APAT, when, when I worked with a cable doing their, you know, uploading the slides, if I was doing a portion of cable, they just took a little bit of the salary out of each place, but, you know, they renegotiated the salaries, and now they're expecting that from both of these staff members, Michelle and I.
Which makes sense, it was a special project to-do list, and I just wanted to clarify that. We weren't, you know, we just wanted to make sure if we need to do something with another line item or something...
No, what's happened is it's increased their workload a lot, because of how many more employees that we're bringing on, because you guys are going 24/7. So this year, we just took hourly rate, but next year, we've increased their salaries to include that in.
Yeah.
So that'll be coming out of our budget, not yours.
Okay. One of the things that, going over our budget numbers, and one thing that, and I went through and through and through, and I couldn't find anything, which I'd like to see, just so I can keep track of it, we do have a line item for the phone, CMP and propane, a heat. I've never, I've never seen a bill, I've looked, Pete has never seen a bill. Selectman Walt said, when he sat in that seat...
That goes right to Michelle, and then we sign them every week.
Yeah, but it comes out of my budget.
Yes.
So I want to, from here on out, when we get a bill, I like it to be sent over in the mail. I'll process at my end, so I have legal checks and balances, so I know where my money's going, and then I'll send it back over with a copy of the spreadsheet, and what it's for. Because right now, there's thousands of dollars sitting in those accounts, and somebody's drawing off it. You know, I just want to make sure we have checks and balances, so.
Well, the treasurer is in charge of paying all the bills, and then the Selectmen are the checks and balances, where the ones that sign...
Well, that's fine, but I also want checks and balances at my department, so when I have budget, you know, a perfect example is heat telephone, there's like $8,000 in that telephone bill account. Actually, I could tell you exactly what's in, you know. So what I'm saying is, some of these numbers that, when it comes to budgets, if I actually know what we're spending for telephone...
Yeah, all you have to do is any time...
Or CMP, well...
Anytime you want to know what you have in your budget in each account, you can go and talk to Michelle, and she can tell you exactly...
I can do that, right, but I want to see the bill. That's the way I look at it. I don't think it's a big thing to be, I get the Verizon bill for the rescue, I get my bills for everything else for that department, except for those three. I don't see why it would be real hard for her to make a copy of it, or...
And that's what I was going to say, if I can interrupt, I mean, and that may just be a, maybe a little lack of communication, because both Road Commissioners, most all departments have to sign the bill before they go to Michelle. So the mail comes in, well, the mail comes in, she looks at it, she determines whose signature it needs. Generally, the Department Head signs off on it before, and she may not be doing that with fire, electric, and propane.
It hasn't been done in years over there, but I think it's a good idea, yeah.
Because it's probably just, it's just everyday, but it's just everyday stuff.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a good idea, I think, to have the bills go to the Department Head, let them sign off, and ship it back over.
But the only problem with that is that when they end up in the town's name, if they don't get paid on time...
Yep.
It's on the town, and that has happened before.
We've got all kinds of other bills that they take care of, too, over there, so...
But it's certainly your call, however you want to do it, it's something you know.
I think you should have the bills and process them like he does every other bill.
Well, you've got to come over every week to do your payroll and drop all that off, so at that time, you can just ask Michelle to show you the bills that she has, and you can go through them and sign them off, instead of changing all the mailing addresses, because we just opened up the account for the ambulance station, and that's being built, going to be sent here now, too. Rather than mail it, you know, mailing everything to each department, that just doesn't make sense to me.
But I don't always, a lot of times, it's after this place is closed, it's 10:00, 11:00, midnight, by the time I get things done, we're done at the station, I drop my mail off, for things to be done for the department.
How do the Road Commissioners do it? We don't mail bills to their house.
No, all the bills, I think they're happy medium. All the bills come in, we sort out the mail, Michelle will open it, if it's, you know, she does not do it for CMP, telephone, and propane, but certainly can. All the bills go in the correct Department Head.
Oh, in their mailboxes, okay.
The boxes.
Okay.
She will not pay them until she gets them signed and back.
Okay, that makes sense.
I mean, we've never done it with utilities, but let's just say the roadside purchases or something, the transfer station purchases, she won't sign off on the IT guy, if he's been here working until I initial it. So she just takes it upon herself for the utilities, because a lot of those people don't have control of anyways, but certainly not an issue, as long as the board is okay with it, I'll make sure you get copies prior to. But all the mail will come here, you'll get them, and then send them back.
Yeah, I just had a concern of going to all of these vendors and saying, okay, mail this bill here, and this bill here, and that, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I'd just like to see it first, because...
Have them all come here, then you can see them, you sign them, and then give them to Michelle, and then she'll put them to us to pay them.
Yeah, and that, with the, the size of our budget that it is now, we'll be able to track this, and then we'll be able to look better, or see, you know, there could be, by looking at the bills, we'd be able to determine if we have any, any other problems in-house in those buildings, and be able to track this, so. That would be great. Training with, that one's all set. Okay, that's good. And, yep.
Did it?
Jeffy, Smith, do you have anything on this before we move on to the agenda? Thank you, guys.
I was, I got caught on a late call, so...
Oh, okay, nope.
Sorry I'm late.
No, we just talked about the action plan in regards to MMA, about the rescue building, and that we're moving along with Jeff, and getting that stuff taken care of in the next few weeks, we should be good on that. And, I think we were just talking about those three bills that we have, we'd like to...
All right.
So, thank you.
On the, on the ambulance billing sign, there's missing paperwork, I'm working on that for you guys.
Ambulance?
Billing, the company that does our billing.
Tammy Higgins?
Yeah.
She contacted you?
Yes. I've been in contact with her, because she still hasn't had access, the state, for whatever reason, said they did it and took care of it, and then...
When's the last time she told you there was missing paperwork?
Yesterday.
Huh.
And then the contract that you guys signed with her has discrepancies in it, and we need to alleviate those as soon as possible.
That's the contract she drew up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, it's got, the ones that I noticed, not ones that she noticed.
What kind of discrepancies?
Two different billing percentages.
Well, didn't it depend, I mean, the agreement...
No, for what she takes.
Right, no, I, you know, I know.
So it said six and a half, and then parentheses, seven, so I'm guessing that she went in and changed it, when she changed, she went up half a percent when she changed from the Ambulance Association to Town, I'm just guessing, didn't go back and change the language, so the contract language conflicts itself, so that's something we've got to get fixed.
Okay, we'll look at it.
We've got to go with that stuff in the fine-tuning comb.
We'll look at it, because we signed that.
Yeah, I've got the scanned copies of everything that you signed, and I've got the stuff that's got to get fixed, we'll work on all that, but I just wanted to make you know that that's an ongoing issue.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, fighter paramedic application.
So last week, the Fire, the gentleman provided you with this packet, the Employment Opportunity Packet. They were looking to go out and start advertising for this position. I sent it to the board in hopes that you could review it, I knew that there were some concerns with it, some minor changes here and there, but I didn't, haven't done anything to it until I wanted you guys to guide what, what, if any, changes you wanted.
Okay, one concern I have is, this has to go on Town Letterhead, and, because this is all, this is municipal department now, so we'll be changing it to a Town Letterhead. Do we have the agility test? We also have to put signature things on some of this stuff.
And he did send it to me in Word, so whatever changes...
Oh, okay, so you can make the changes.
Whatever changes you instruct me to make.
The agility test laid out is in that packet, sorry.
Okay, all right, so we have to sign off on that. That was something that the Fire Commission didn't want the temporary chief to sign off on right now, so we'll sign off on that.
Yeah, both the chief and I have both passed that, so. And if you guys want to come over and see it, we can set up a night that you want to see it, or you can try it, too, if you like.
Sure. One of us will be doing the modified version of it.
So...
Bill? Is that you?
That wouldn't be Bill.
If we put it on the Town Letterhead, I've got just a few, I just would, you know, pretty up the numbers and stuff on the second page, which Rick and I already spoke about. If I add the signature lines, at this point, you are looking at the date, so...
The dates there, just to put in there to have a placeholder.
Right.
I didn't like to leave a blank.
That's going to get, where you get to.
Yeah, sorry.
Where did you get the waiver of claim injury from?
That's the same form, it came from Sanford.
Yep.
That's the same form they use with the...
With the candidates?
Candidates.
Yeah, candidate, physical, waiver of claim injury, yeah.
Yeah, we've actually redone this a little already with the packet, with the Fire Packet.
All right, so make some changes, and put signature pages, and...
So as far as the deadline, because obviously we need to advertise this, do you want me to bring it back to you next Tuesday with this?
To sign, yeah.
To sign, and, all right, so then you, we're going to need to pick a new date, because by the time, if you sign it on the 29th...
Well, we don't have to sign the job description yet, right? No, we do, because then it's going to go in their files.
I just want to make sure that you have a chance to take a final look at it before we advertise it.
Okay.
So if you want to do that via email...
So you could start advertising it next Wednesday, and sign it next Tuesday.
So when's it, what kind of deadline are you looking at? How much time, Ed? I mean, have we talked about, where, I mean, these applications, based on the way that it's set up, are going to come to me? You, who's doing the interviewing? I mean, what are we doing with these, and what deadline are we, how long are we going to accept them for? He just told you that the deadline was just something he filled in, it's certainly open for discussion.
Probably want to have it out there, what, 30 days?
I, my suggestion was that we advertise for a month. We've got to go through the first round of testing, that's going to thin the candidates quite a bit, usually, physical agility cuts a good chunk off. And then, based on that, we make a selected oral board with a representative from the active fire rescue, a representative from the town.
Now, the three Selectmen are doing the interviews for this job, with other people coming in.
You're going to have these guys involved.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, but, yeah, but we're not...
Because that's our expertise.
But these are, these are Town employees, so we have to do the hiring here, but we definitely will have you guys involved. I mean, I don't know anything about firefighting or reambulance, so I definitely want you there. Um, but, um, and I'd actually like you to go over the applications, because if somebody's application, like we went through with the chief's job, doesn't come up to par, there's no sense giving them a physical agility test and taking.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted a team effort. And usually you always get one person from away, too. Uh, a chief or a firefighter or an officer from another town to get a different perspective, because they're gonna have an unbiased and they have no investment. They're gonna give you a pure logical.
You know, and that's what we did for the chief, and that's, that's a higher level job. For the actual employees, the, um, selectmen have always been the ones that hired the employees for the town, so. The chief was different. It's a first time, and, and they wrote that, um, ordinance to have that committee come in and do it. But, no, we'll definitely have, and I also think it's important that whoever the chief's gonna be is involved in this, too. I mean.
Well, that person won't be.
Yeah, I know, they won't be here for a while, I know.
It could be, that could be sometimes, oh, away.
Yeah, part of this, moving this procedure forward is that we need to have that person employed, because we need them to fill shifts. Um, like I said, without hiring anybody else from outside to come work at Acton Fire Rescue, we're getting by, but if we don't fill this position, we're gonna struggle to get by. If anyone was to get sick or injured, or have some, a death in their family or anything like that, because we're just, got enough people to fill all the slots now.
But how, how many of the people that are working now are gonna apply for the job?
Not sure, but that'll take only a certain percentage out.
We don't have any paramedics that are working now that.
Possibly one.
Wanna do it full-time?
One, possibly.
One, possibly, so we're still gonna lose that one anyways.
We only have two paramedics right now.
Two, you and who else?
Sharon Anderson.
Oh.
Or Jackson, sorry, Sharon Jackson.
Yeah.
Um, but she only, you know, Sharon only does 12 hours or so a week now, so that would actually take, add on a bunch that we wouldn't have to fill. It's not everybody works a 40-hour week, you know. Everyone's got random hours.
So, I mean, we, we could, too, um, Ted, Ed, Bill, with your approval, I mean, we can, can work on the document. There's not a lot of changes. We can get it to town spec, so we can, you can approve it via email by looking at it the next day or two. We really just need to agree on the dates and, like I said, make a couple of changes. Um, and then we could get it advertised a little quicker. It looks like, and, and I just wanna make sure everybody's on board, the interviewing team is gonna be the five of you. Um, the physical agility test is given, it looks like about a week after the applications come in. So you're not gonna actually do interviews until after that.
For 30 days, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So we, I mean, we can try to.
As soon as we clean this up and you send it to us, we can go ahead and put it out, and then we can sign it next Tuesday, or we can put it out in the paper.
Right, so we assume we can get it done by the 25th, by this Friday. We just need a day or two.
Mm-hmm. Where was the place that we advertised at? We got people from out of state.
Few places through the fire and rescue, um, Sanford gave us, some websites. So do you wanna stick with April 15th, or you wanna spread it out to April 22nd? That puts it out for about four weeks.
Probably I'll go to the 22nd.
All right.
Sure.
So application deadline will be the 22nd, which is a Friday, 4 o'clock. And then the agility tests, this just saves me from calling all of you, yes, tomorrow.
Yep.
Uh, the agility test, it's something, if you guys are gonna be the, something that everybody wants to be able to be at? I mean, all five of you wanna be able to attend that?
Oh, no, no, no.
Not necessary.
No, we, we just, we just need to sign this, this was a request from, um, the chairman of the committee, because the chief is a candidate for one of the jobs. He didn't think you should be signing off on this right now, so he asked us to get it signed.
So the two of them will do the agility test and then come back to you.
Harold will be in charge of the, Harold Smith will be in charge of the agility test.
He's our lead proctor.
Yep.
The exam.
So let's just say you get 10 applications in, and they, they say that seven people pass the agility test. You want, you just wanna see the applications from those seven?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll set up interviews with those seven, with the five of you.
If somebody's not gonna qualify, you know, we're not gonna bring them to an interview, so.
So all I need from you is a, a date, if we're gonna do the interviews through the 22nd, and update a date that the agility test is gonna be given, and I'll prep these packets for the board to review.
When did you close applications?
22nd at.
April?
Yep.
Yes.
That Friday.
Okay, let's do, let's do the physical agility the 7th? Does that work for a Saturday? That's usually the most common.
You don't wanna do it any sooner, so you can start interviewing?
We'll have another Saturday.
30th, no?
I won't be able to attend. Actually, both, both, um, my father and I are teaching a class that day.
Okay, so May 7th.
And then interviews will generally are set up after you've got your list of candidates.
After you let me know who passes.
Yep, what works for them, what works for us, and then we tell them just to show up.
Oh, well, I'll schedule them. Okay, so I'll send a draft to all of you. We'll not go anywhere. We'll review, um, where we're gonna advertise it by the end of the week, once they, we get everybody's okay with a couple of minor changes and.
Yep.
Be good to go. We'll be advertising in no time.
So, um, if we had to, I don't know, just asking, this is new ground I'm treading on. If it's, we, like you said, we have some changes or whatever, could we sit down as a workshop? All of us together in, without having to tie up selectmen's meetings to discuss this stuff, or does, is this?
Changes?
Or whatever, or something, or, you know, 'cause this is all, this is, this is new to the town, this is new for the department.
You're, I mean, you're not gonna have an issue. I mean, they're, based on what they just told me, the only changes they wanna see is the letterhead and a couple of dates. The changes that I'm gonna make, you're not even gonna notice, 'cause they're just gonna be formatting, so.
That's right. But what I'm saying is if, for some reason, we needed to get together, we can do that without having.
Next Tuesday.
Okay. Okay, well, no, that's what I was saying. I know, I know we're gonna kinda watch it, 'cause if, if there's more than two of you selectmen, then you, it just gets crazy and all that stuff, so that's what we were wondering.
It becomes a quorum, and we're making decisions.
We can continue to work with our.
Yep, we'll just.
Liaison if we need.
And, and do that there, so. Okay, very good. All right, then. Anything else?
I think that's it for now.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, winter sand salt shed, hasn't been any change on that yet. Jim Dour?
I spoke to, uh, Mr. Winchell today, and he has, um, been dealing with code enforcement. They figured out exactly what kinda door, based on, um, how many people can be in the room, with what, whether it swings out or in, whether it has to have the panic bar. Um, and he has assured me that, um, he's gonna be able to go ahead and order it, and it should be just a basic door.
Abandoned properties?
Uh, we have a 30-day court date on one of them and 60 days on the other. We're in the process of, um, seeking legal fees, too, at this point, for both of them.
Okay. Uh, library floor, all done?
All done. Library floor is all done.
All the books are back in?
All the books are back in.
Nice job.
Yes.
I have to go in and thank the library people, too.
Yes, it looks really good. They are very happy with it. I'm trying to talk Elise into having a little, um, open house, you know, so people can see it, but.
Uh, lobby clerk's office renovation walkthrough.
So last Thursday was the date, March 17th, that, uh, we had advertised, anybody interested in bidding on the RFP for the municipal lobby clerk's office, uh, to come. Unfortunately, we didn't have a big turnout, um, we had zero. Well, we kinda had half of one, but let me get to that. So the person that originally drew up the, um, plans, Mr. Fisk, um, did an amazing job on the plans, and I'm so, so thankful for that, but unfortunately, he's just busy. He's just really, really busy this time of year. Um, so we kinda came to a, um, an idea if, if the board will entertain it. Um, if you recall, we have a couple of maintenance employees that we use to do the siding with Ken Paul, um, very well-qualified construction workers, um, who are already town employees, covered under our insurance and, and workers' comp. Um, we've asked Jim to put together a, um, a bid based on, including an engineering fee for him, and over, him overseeing the project, so it's under his name and his business, but hiring these two employees to do most of the physical work. These guys will, you know, do all the drywall and, and so forth, but Jim will still do the finetry, finishing, um, cabinets and, and touching it up and be responsible for the whole project. Um, it really should save some money, because these guys are gonna come in lower. What we, what we paid them for siding is lower than what Jim's subcontractors are gonna come in at. And it also gives us a little more control. We're gonna use our own electrician and our own flooring people, so that we can save some money there as well.
Okay, so he's gonna give us a total bid, but then we're just gonna pay him an engineering fee and for his time for the cap and tree, and the rest of the money will stay here, and we will pay hourly and hire our own electrician and hire our own flooring guys.
He actually.
We're not gonna give him $22,000 or $25,000.
He's building the budget backwards, based on how many hours he, these guys are essentially gonna work for the town, but they're, we're gonna work under him. He's already asked what their hourly rates are, so he, he's figuring how many hours it's gonna take them to do. We're not gonna pay him. The town's gonna pay him, but he's still gonna work off the budget, as far as, you know, two employees at 40 hours doing this work and two employees doing this.
Well, if, if we pay him as a contractor, and then he hires them and pays them the hourly rate.
We're paying him an hour, hourly rate.
Okay, that's what I asked, so we're not gonna give him $25,000. We're just gonna give him his, his part of it for his work.
But he's doing the full budget, I guess, is what I was trying to say.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
I mean, it's still gonna come up to around the $25,000, assuming the taxpayers approve it, but.
Yeah, 'cause if we, if, if he pays them, then they would be onto his insurance.
Right, no, the town will have to pay him.
That's why we have to pay him.
We'll end up, we'll end up buying the materials as the town.
As the town, we'll get it.
It should be quite a savings. You're gonna save that mock-up and.
Sales tax exempt. We've got a few things that, um.
Yeah, so you probably, you can stretch that budget a little bit further than what.
Yeah, Ted, Ted told me I might could get some extra furniture out of it.
I'll fix my table that you broke.
I didn't break that table.
Foreclosed property tax sale.
All right, so as you know, we foreclosed, unfortunately, on two properties. At, when all was said and done, the right to redemption period has gone by. Um, at this point, I have been speaking with code enforcement, the assessors, and the attorney in regards to what's next. So, um, I thought I was gonna have numbers for you today. Originally, one of them is a 40-ish acre lot on H Road, and we had talked about splitting the lot and selling it as two buildable lots. The recommendation from Mr. Linkowski is, really, no, don't do that. You know, you, you got through foreclosed, you know, just quit claim deed it over to somebody, get it out of your hands. You know, you don't wanna be responsible for, for the property lines, for the surveying, for this, that. He said, just sell this one, one piece. It's cleaner, it's better, it's easier. You know, the less the town get involved in the process, because we could be held responsible down the road. So Dennis is working on, um, minimum values for both of them.
So we can get a, a, a minimum bid?
Uh, we're gonna put a minimum bid on both of them. Um, it turns out the other property is also buildable. I didn't think it was.
Oh.
So, but they generally say that, um, tax-acquired go for about 50% of what it's assessed at.
So it's assessed, the.
One of.
H Road is $90,000, so it'd be $45,000. The other one was very low, though, right?
30, I think.
30ish, yeah. So with your approval, I will prepare the tax sales for next week with whatever nu- number Dennis gives us. You can review them, and we'll decide if we wanna announce and go forward.
Okay, could you text me the street address of the house next door to work tomorrow? I've been trying to find it to see if it's a viable place for the tower, and I can't find a piece of land.
Are we talking about?
The one on Fox's Ridge.
On Fox's Ridge.
The one on Fox's Ridge. I wanna see if it's at the top of the mountain, 'cause we may be able to use it for the town.
Okay.
So if you, they're just the next abutting property, if I can see this, their street number, then I can see where the property is.
Okay.
Send that out to me, too, please.
Sure.
I wanna do a drive-by.
All right, sign order referendum ballot election.
So I give you all a copy, but, uh, certainly prefer you sign one.
You have the original?
Um, any of them's fine.
It is hereby ordered that the question set forth below be placed on a referendum ballot for the election to be held on June 14th, 2016, and that an attested copy of this order is placed on file with the town clerk of Acton, Maine. Question one, shall the town, shall the town will vote?
Shall the town vote?
Shall the town vote to allow the treasurer to execute a bond in the town of Acton's name in the amount of $75,527 for a five-year term with an interest rate of up to 6% to raise and appropriate up to $17,522 for payments on the loan, and appropriate a total of $100,000 for the purpose of purchasing a plus or minus 25-acre parcel of land, which is a portion of MAP 220 Lot 002, known as Romack Orchards, which includes the summit of Goat Hill. The balance of funds, $24,473, shall come from the forestry committee reserve fund. Said purchases contingent upon fundraiser, fundraising efforts of the Three Rivers Land Trust to contribute an additional $75,000 prior to June 30th, 2017. A motion. Your discussion? I'll make a motion first.
I'll make a motion that we approve the order.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope, all in favor?
So while you're signing that, um, you are gonna be required to have a public hearing. And got a couple options with the public hearing. It should be held 30 to 45 days before the election, so you're looking at end of April. I was thinking maybe the 26th.
26th of April?
Yep.
Okay. That is what night?
It's a Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay.
So you wanna do it at 5:00 first, before the meeting?
Um.
To advertise, you know what I mean, 'cause I don't know what time.
That's probably early. Maybe we should do it at 6:00.
You wanna do it at 6:00, the meeting first?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Cashin, you got that? Public hearing regarding that question on Tuesday, April 26th, at 6:00 PM.
All right.
Bill, Ed, you all right with that?
Yes, fine.
Mask gathering permit?
Mask gathering permit. This is, um, the Patriot, that Patriots Ride for the Troops annual ride. Uh, they are gonna be stopping at Iron Tails. That's their last stop. Um, I spoke to Mr. Martinez today. He estimates about 500 people stopping at the end of that run.
That's a big ride. I've been on it.
It's a big ride. So.
Motion for the mask gathering permit? Has he got police and all that all set already?
I've, um.
They will through the, uh, Patriot Riders handle all that.
Oh, they, this isn't something he's running, somebody else's?
No, this, no, this stats in New York, so it's the spring Patriots rider.
Because they're stopping there.
It's, it's their destination.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're very good at, at running those, so.
Yes, and I spoke.
I make a motion that we approve the, the, uh.
Mask gathering.
Mask gathering permit.
Sir, all in favor?
I did speak to the sheriff's department as well, um, and they're well aware of it, and we'll have it handled.
Dozens of policemen that ride in that as well, so.
Uh, Iron Tails liquor license renewal.
Uh, so he did also drop off an application and paid the fee for the liquor license. Um, all that we need to do at this point is start doing some of the background checks, which I've already, uh, got the ball rolling on, but we need to set a date, and this is where.
Public hearing?
Yeah, this is where it kinda gets interesting. If you look at an April calendar, because later on in new business, I've got April meetings, so if we can just kinda join them together, um, so April, April 5th is the school meeting. Now technically, you don't have to be over there till 7:00, so you could have a meeting and a public hearing then. Um, if you decide to cancel that meeting because of the school.
The school meeting doesn't start till 7:00?
Correct. My concern about canceling the, the 5th meeting is that we know from the commission that they're probably gonna have names ready for you, because they believe they're gonna make their decisions on the 31st. And we know that both of our, our, um, our, well, the current fire chief, we can, I think, appoint through June 30th, it's based on the conversation, so I can prepare that one for next week. But our deputy, that's either going to lapse, or the two names that they move forward are not gonna be signed right away, so it's something to keep in mind. The 12th, the following Tuesday, is the school referendum vote, so if you decide to meet, uh, it'll be downstairs, because we'll be having an election up here, and I wasn't sure if you wanted to have a public hearing at that time. Much further after that, we've just tied up, um, one of the Tuesdays. His thing runs out May 1st, so he was hoping.
Let's, um, how about we tentatively schedule it for the same night as the school meeting? As long as nothing comes bad in the background check, it's just gonna be a few minutes anyways.
Yeah, I don't think there's gonna be any issues, so, yeah.
So what time on the 5th would you like to have it?
Um, have it before, yeah, have it before our meeting. As part, we'll open the meeting, go to the public hearing.
5:00?
Yeah, and then go back to the meeting, and then we, then I, we can go to the, to the school budget meeting.
And I mean, unless.
Unless you find something in the background check. If there was issues last year, then, um, we'll postpone it.
Okay, um, and I, I mean, my goal is to make that agenda as light as possible, so unless it's mandatory, we're gonna, I mean, unless.
Yeah, even if we just do the public hearing and, and, um, appoint the, um, assistant chiefs, then, and then.
See what comes up.
Close the meeting, yeah, don't put anything else on.
Okay, I'll try.
Well, we're meeting every week, so there's, I don't think, unless it's something very serious, there's no reason why I can't wait a week.
Yep.
LD 11637 survey.
So these next two D and E, one of them came from you, Ed, and one of them came from you, Ted. Um, this one, LD 1637, came from, does anybody wanna, I think that one was yours, Ted?
Yeah.
So basically, if you wanna just go through that bottom, and maybe you guys can answer those questions out loud real quick, I can, um, take your answers and get the survey back to me, municipal?
Um, do you have any postal mail routes in your municipality that involve mail delivery over roads that are discontinued to town maintenance? I don't know.
Okay, we'll call the post office on that one, next.
I don't know if the post office can deliver to a road that is in a town road.
I know most private roads, like, um.
They require a mailbox at the end of the road.
Yeah, they got the community mailboxes where everybody picks up at the end of the road, but I don't, I don't know if this, so, yeah, let's ask the post office.
As, same with the next question?
Well, yeah, I guess it depends on the answer to.
First question.
Post office, first question. If it's, if they say yes, that there's roads that we're not maintaining that they're delivering mail on. What? The post office goes all the way down there?
Uh-huh.
So the answer would be yes, it would increase us, then.
Yep.
But in regards to question three, I mean, there's no financial impact on the town, right? It would be on the.
Well, if we have to stop maintaining private roads that have postal delivery, then it's gonna be, it's gonna be a cost to the town. You know, it's gonna be against the, uh, Supreme Court.
Yeah, we can't maintain private roads.
Yeah, using private money and private, uh, public money on private roads, so.
Only the government would figure a way of contradicting themselves.
Mm-hmm.
All right, let me, I'll do a little looking into that and.
Yeah.
See if the salad, see if the, um, it's mandatory that we reply. I'll look into it.
Yeah, um, oh, I don't think it's mandatory that we apply, but I definitely wanna give our input, because they're gonna vote on this, and if they pass this, it's definitely, they're gonna pass the bill, and then they're gonna give the bill for doing it to us, and, and we don't need more.
So you want me to get clarification from the post office on how many specifically?
Yeah, on the post office, yeah, on the post office and, um. Well, this is only legally discontinued or abandoned roads. This doesn't go into private roads. Oh, wait a minute, any of the public right away? Yeah, it's all public stuff, so, okay. Yeah, just find out if they're going down. Any roads, I'm.
Got it.
Okay. Uh, 12 town letter?
This, I think, came from Ed.
I just forwarded it on, 'cause I didn't know if you had gotten a copy of it.
Yeah, this is about community broadband team. Um, I took it up on myself after reading it to forward it to Mike Corey, 'cause he really would be the one that, um, you know, we would, we would turn to for something like this. A community broadband team that they're trying to put together on behalf of 12 teams, uh, 12 towns. Mike's response was, um, this is a great idea, but it's gonna be a lot of work. A committee that needs to be organized, get started. A selectman needs to be a member. Uh, so he says that he could be a member and share a lot of info and insight for both the APAT and the school. Uh, it could potentially bring a high-speed fiber connection to the town hall into APAT at a discounted price, um, much like MSLN internet that they have at the school, so.
Yeah, and Sanford just got a grant to do this, too, so maybe coming closer.
You know, as you look through it, I mean, it, he's basically asking if, and, you know, if the town is interested in moving forward with it.
Well, have him attend the informational meeting, and, and we'll go by his judgment, 'cause he knows this stuff better than any of us, so.
You want me to ask Michael to attend the informational meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
April meetings?
Uh, we just handled that. We decided that we're gonna have little or no business on the 5th. 12th, you'll have to meet downstairs.
All right. And that's just for the public hearing and signing for the fi- assistant fire chief, right?
Yeah, but the 12th, you should have a regular meeting.
Okay. All right, anything from the public?
Well, she's other business, yeah.
Can you go to the microphone so that they can hear you? Sure.
Thank you.
I'm Susan Chadbourne, and I'm a fairly new resident to Acton, Maine. Um, and my proposal is to offer yoga classes here in the town hall to the community of Acton, employees and residents. Um, I think, uh, it would be fun, and I, from my understanding, it was offered at one point before, and, um, I'm just curious to see if that would be something you would entertain. It would be, um, what I call community yoga by donation, so I would ask, um, like a recommended donation of $9 for an hour class, or a $6 minimum. And I'm, uh, toying with the idea of three different time slots to see what works for the employees works for the employees and, um, citizens of the town, I know there's a group of teachers that are interested, so one of the time slots that I came up with was Thursday after school, um, they thought three fifteen to four fifteen would be a good time slot for them to get from the school to here, I did inquire at the school about, 'cause they wanted me to do it there, but, um, it seemed like their facilities were pretty well spoken for, um, the gym and the cafeteria, and a classroom would involve moving so much stuff, so, um, it seemed like I should abandon that idea and suggest having it here for the teachers after school, three fifteen to four fifteen, um, there are some people that may be interested in coming in the morning, um, people that like to exercise from eight to nine, or something like that in the morning, so perhaps a morning class, and then, um, I thought of an evening class for people that work a more traditional nine-to-five schedule, um, try something like five to six o'clock.
Are you for-profit?
Yes.
You are?
It would be for-profit, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's an issue where it's a, a public building, for you to use a public building for, uh, for-profit enterprise.
So, even though it's by donation, that
Well, if, if you were a nonprofit, and we let nonprofits use the building, but I don't think
I see.
We can let you use it as a for-profit, we, um, you'd be using a taxpayer building for, you know, to make money.
For my own business, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, um, now, we did have a dance class before.
Yeah, and I was, I, it was the first time I saw the word donation, so I was trying to think about, because we've got a few different places, I mean, that are nonprofit, that do by donation only, that we're allowed to use it, like the Owls
Like in nonprofits.
But, but they're nonprofit, um, I can certainly, with your okay, just check into it.
Um, yeah, I, I just, I really don't think we can allow somebody to make money off of a town building, is, is our concern.
I mean, right
Who are you gonna check into it with?
And, but, and the thing is, by the time she, if we charged her the fee that we charged everyone else, because to rent the hall, there's a fifty-dollar fee, because that covers the, the maintenance of cleaning it, and the electricity, and, and heat, um, I mean, there would be nothing, you know, probably wouldn't, there wouldn't be any profit afterwards.
Right.
Paid the fifty-dollar fee, um, I guess, May Municipal, I don't, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say that'd be a good place to sit, check with them and see what they have to say.
Yep, so we'll check into it and see if it's legal.
What about, I was gonna say, what about the fitness center, that other part?
Well, it's still a town building, but you, um, you could look at that, too, I don't know if that space would, have you been in the gym at all?
I have not, it's been suggested that I take a look in there.
Yeah, I don't, depending on how many people you're planning on having, that might be a big enough space for you, and be a lot easier, you wouldn't have to move anything around it.
Okay.
It's already an open room, and it was set up for doing floor exercises and stuff, but the, um, it got flooded, and we had to tear the floor up, so it's a cement floor, but they use mats for yoga, right?
Right, it's best to do it on wood or cement, anyway, you don't want carpet, yeah.
Oh, it is, okay, alright, so, yeah, we'll find out from MMA if it's legal, and, 'cause it's a great thing to offer, and
Right, yeah, so that would be a different situation, or is it still a town building?
Yeah, it's still a town building, so
Right.
Um, and we would probably have to still do the fifty-dollar charge to have the cleaning done and all that, so.
So, might not have to on that building down there, so.
We still gotta clean it, I mean, we're paying for a cleaner to clean the building.
Yeah, but she might be a little, it's different than this building here, though, that building down there is getting cleaned all the time, so.
By
I mean, let's look and see if it's legal to start with, before we get into anything
That's the main thing, right.
Somebody we hired to clean, so, that's why we charge the fifty dollars here, is because we pay for the cleaning.
Right, right, but to put a mat on the floor and pick a mat back up again, you're not gonna need a fifty-dollar cleaning charge, so, it might, might work, I don't know, maybe, maybe you could work something out where, I mean, I know you probably wanna make a dollar or two off of it, but maybe you could do something with the gym and donate the money towards the gym.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, just a thought.
Okay.
So, but we'll look into MMA first and see if it's at least legal to do.
Okay.
And we'll go from there.